This is the September 25, 2019 meeting of the Acushnet Public Library Board of Trustees. We are being audiotaped and videotaped, and we do have a quorum. First item on the agenda is the secretary's report from August 28. Anyone have any clarifications to the minute, or questions? Any other motion?
Motion to accept.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next is the unit date library budget. We're three quarters into fiscal year 20 already. We are a total of 27.3% spent out for the year. Unless you have any questions, everything is just where it's supposed to be, which I think you can see by the percentages we're at. We've received three Eversource bills, so we're on travel and energy. Rapidly spending from that materials line for new materials, which is what we always do from that line. Nothing else is hitting out to me, so unless something sticks out to you, everything's right under that?
I think so.
Good. Three months, sorry. No, not three quarters, sorry. We're three months, one quarter. Woo! Thank you, Henry. I wrote that down, too. Thank you.
I did, too.
It's a good thing you asked, Henry. Thank you. At least you don't know unless you say, "Hey, well, it's been a long day." Nobody has any questions? Any more questions?
Will you go accept?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Old business. Still talking about the fence. I think you can see it's coming along, so that's good news. It did cost an additional, so far, $544.88 to get the additional pieces needed, because they were short. So we're at a total, so far, of $3,070.84 on the fence. As far as I know, the drill that's going to be rented to deal with the rocks has not been funded yet. The work that hasn't been done, that's why you still see some gaps. But I think it threw it along nicely, and it looks, I think it looks great. How many do you know when they're gonna get back to do that?
They just were here a couple days ago to go up to the road line with the south side, but I don't know when they're coming back for the building. I have no idea.
What was the quote on the table?
Well, I would think they were gonna do it before the ground freezes, so as far as I know, they'll be doing it before that.
What's the total amount?
$3,070.84 so far. Because we still have to rent the drill. The initial quote that you approved about a year ago was for about $2,900 or $2,800, so with the additional costs, that puts us still not bad there. Still a lot less than some other quotes we had put down, so if we haven't done in-house, it certainly saves a lot of money. And that's all coming from the Stok gift fund, just a refreshment.
There was no way you could let me tell you if we're running into those rocks.
Correct. Right. Correct. And as far as the computer upgrades go, I mentioned this a little bit in my director's report, but everything seems to be going smoothly with the upgrades. Four of the staff computers have been upgraded to Windows 10. One is being upgraded right now and will be returned to us on Friday as long as that works out for sales to returning to us. And the upgrades have actually ended up coming at no cost, which is wonderful. And five new computers have been purchased, and the total for that ended up being $3,572.40. And that includes a setup fee and new Microsoft Office licenses, which we needed for all five computers. Sales is handling all of that for us. Again, that's coming from the Stok gift, and you got approved up to $5,000, so we've come in about $1,500 under that, which I think is good news. There's no date on when those five new computers will be installed, their purchase, they've been received. The sales tech likes to do as much as he can off-site and then to really get them set up here. But he's doing this for, you know, all the other libraries in the network that need the Windows upgrade, and the new North Dartmouth branch will be opening at some point this fall also, and I think he's got something like 16 new computers for them. So he's got a full plate, but it needs to be done by January. So the fact that we've got him at least is a good start, and hopefully he'll be able to install them even before the end of the year.
Those are the updates for that. All the old business?
All the old business. I feel like this has been old business for the past few years.
Old, old, old business. Anyone have anything else on the old business? All right, we'll move on to the new business.
I know this is always a lengthy thing to talk about. And I'm gonna try to approach it a little bit differently from how we review previous action plans, but today we're reviewing FY '20 action plan. The last time we looked at this document, like I said in my email, was October of last year, when you approved it to be submitted to the state for December 1st last year. At the next meeting, hopefully, we'll be reviewing the FY '21 already action plan to submit to the state by this December 1st. So it's a good opportunity for us to just talk about what the goals are, what the expectations are for both myself and the staff. And we'll be trying to go with that. You're my losses, so it's good for you to be taking a look at this, too. And then it also just will be a refresher for when we do the FY '21 review in a month or so. I'm not gonna go, I'll go through each goal, because I think it's important to mention the goals. I'm not gonna go through each objective. I'll just talk about the ones that we have made progress on. So far, we're only three months, three quarters, three months into FY '20, so we still have nine months to go with this, but we already have accomplished a lot. And if there's anything that you wanna stop and ask me a question about, please feel free to do so. But in goal one, our patrons will find the library relevant, useful, and attractive to their changing needs, both intellectual and recreational. And I like to think that that's certainly happening with our patrons. Our, you know, objective about increasing overall circulation by 3% annually from FY '17 to FY '19, we've gone up by almost 30,000 items in those three or so. We've certainly reached the 3% goal. In terms of the collection maintenance schedule that I mentioned up top there? That's an in-house schedule. That's not something that the trustees have to approve. It's just something that we use in-house. And as you know, we've been actively weeding and merging some nonfiction collections. And we do that every fall, and then we do an inventory in winter. So that's sort of what I mean by the selection maintenance schedule we're following. Fall is a great time to sort of evaluate what the collection looks like, and then we do the inventory in winter just to make sure nothing is missing. So we've been doing that the past couple of years, and it seems to be working out quite well. The books, the new books being moved to the table out in the middle of the main area seems to be working out well. I think people enjoy having everything on one level and things browsing a little bit easier for people, so we foresee positive feedback on that. On the next objective, mentions following the technology plan developed in FY '19. That was never finalized in FY '19, primarily because we knew in midway through FY '19 that we were going to have to get new computers. So I wanted to sort of figure out where we stood with the Windows 10 upgrade before creating a technology plan that would maybe become obsolete in six or seven months. So once those new computers are installed and the Windows upgrade is done, then I will concern myself in January with following, or with developing a technology plan to be followed. We're still offering the weekly tech hour programs. Evaluate the website this year for an FY '20 timeframe. And as you may remember, it was redesigned by Force last February, I think it was, because we needed to change the format of GoDaddy, who we use as our platform. So not looking to evaluate the website again. It was already heavily updated, sure, but it's, we sort of took care of that last February. Under the increasing adult program attendance, we were supposed to do an FY '20 launch a monthly feature film series, and that was already launched in the spring of 2019. So we're already ahead game on that. The attendance at tween teen programs is beginning to eat in the area, I think that we always struggle with, because it's really hard to get that age group in, because they're so busy. We did launch that Mission 9-12 program for ages 9 to 12 over the summer, which we got a lot of great feedback from. And unfortunately, we just haven't figured out a way to do that during the school year yet. But it would be great if we could, because the kids are participating in that and really seem to enjoy it. We have collaborated with local middle school students on a library ad campaign there. But a great liaison for the public library is the school librarian. As you may know, most of the schools do not have librarians this year or are professionals within the library, so there's really not that natural go-to. That's the person I would have been planning to collaborate with, something like that. And the administration has been great about involving me, so that's, you know, the superintendent and the principals and the teachers have been really responsive to feedback, too. But it's really, I feel it's important as a public library for me to state publicly that it's really unfortunate that we're missing librarians. And within our schools, the public library does not replace the school library. We're here to enhance services, not replace services, and hopefully something can be worked out in the future so that we do have a natural collaborator within the schools. But we can move forward on things like that. Goal two. So that's goal one. Did anything stand out to you that you want to talk about or only elaborate on more? Like I said, we still have nine months to go, so there's a lot that I haven't talked about, but that doesn't mean it's not going to happen. And goal two, children and their caregivers will have access to the material and programs they need to create a lifelong love of learning. The children's assistant position has been filled for nearly a year now. It's in here next month, so we've been there. Again, we've seen a huge increase to children's circulation. We far surpassed the 2%, but we will continue to work towards that, of course. Have at the bottom that first objective development, 1,000 Books Before Kindergarten incentive program. We already did that in spring of 2019, so that's taken care of for FY '20. That seems to be going really well. Still offering story times. Still doing seasonal holiday programs. As far as increased use of children's room on non-programmed days, we're finding that this school year, we do have a lot of days after school, though families are stocking by the library and moving home. We've added a table to the center of the room, and we're seeing that that's being used heavily. And I think that's something we wanted to do for four years. So we're almost four years we've been here, and we just finally had the chance to do it. Something that seemed so simple, it took us a long time to get it together for that. It's really working out well now that it's there. Every kindergarten student in Acushnet will have a library card someday, I hope. Within that, the action was kindergarten visits at local schools within the first month of the school year to provide services. And as you know, I did have the great chance to go to the elementary school for kindergarten orientation this year, which was a great outreach opportunity, because I could see parents and students on the same day, let them know what we have going on here. I can't say that a lot of people who are not familiar with the library have come in as a result of that, but it is still September. So the fact that I was at least able to get in the door on that orientation, I think is a good positive first step for future collaboration with schools. I had the staff elaborate table at school open house programs here, and I was able to go to both Ford and the elementary schools' open houses a couple of weeks ago. Coincidentally, I was stationed right beside the president of PTO for those open houses. I do have a established relationship with the PTO on here, so I think we're on our way to having that as another good liaison between the library and the school farm. Just a question. Yep?
My question is, with the STEM program happening, is there anything I could do to help with that?
I'm not sure. I could get back to you on that. We do have the PACE program on Mondays, which is a STEM program on Mondays. They come in every other Monday typically, but they have since September been coming in every Monday. And once we get through the month of October and scheduling conflicts we have to the Friends book sale, I think we'll get her back on track to be coming on every Monday, and that's what she's doing, STEM programming throughout her. So we are doing that. Whether or not we can expand on that, I'll get back to you on that. The time of day is always an issue for that, because we're finding we don't get a lot of people to come for programs after school, primarily because they're so busy with other after-school activities. So we've tried to target those kinds of programs to preschool and below. And the best time to do that is mornings, and our Monday, Wednesday mornings are great. But I appreciate that suggestion, and I will certainly speak with Bethany and Sandra to see if there's something that can be tied in. I appreciate the thought on that. Thank you.
Any comments other than that for goal two? Goal three, library services will be available, convenient, accessible to all residents. In FY '19, we did add the Friday hours, and I think that was a really easy transition for everyone, and we're still receiving great feedback from people on that.
We do still have people who say, "Oh, you're open on Fridays." And they're here just about every other day, so it kind of astounds me that they don't know that we're open on Fridays. But we are open on Fridays from 1 to 5. We're open 44 hours a week, which for a library of our size is pretty tremendous. We're continuing to offer that inbound delivery program. We do still need to find some ways to expand on that. We had five, we're down to four participating in the program. And they're receiving between one and two deliveries per month. I'm primarily doing that now. We have collaborated with the Council on Aging, which has been great. But with so few people participating, you really start to develop like a friendship with people when you talk to them on the phone and you pick out their books, or you find out from them what it is they want or need. So then you do wanna be the person who delivers it so that you can see them the person for a few minutes. And I think the participants really appreciate that, and I certainly do. And Sandra helps me out on that, too. And I'm grateful that the COA, you know, really helped us to launch the program. And I'm sure we'll be called upon and begin soon for assistance with that. But it has primarily been since the summer Sandra and I doing that. In terms of that objective there about staff members being empowered to provide a single level of service for the benefit of library patrons, I have continued quarterly staff meetings. As I've expressed to you before, that due to the budget this year, we're only probably going to be able to have two staff meetings this fiscal year. So one in November and then another in late spring. Hopefully, we can do a better job on budgeting for that next year, probably when time comes and we prepare budgeting. But I am in regular communication with staff. Of course, probably too much communication, I think, sometimes. I'm sure some days they open their email boxes way too many. But it does seem to work for us. That's good.
Anything else for goal three?
Goal four, the library will have greater visibility in the community through increased marketing and communication efforts. And there's not a lot that's been really active on this this fiscal year aside for our regular postings on social media. Our social media has grown so much in the past four years. When I first started, there were about 400 likes on the page, and we're at a little over 1,200 right now. So I think the fact that we're reaching so many people really, you know, speaks volumes. That's through Facebook. Our Instagram account, Sandra's really great about posting pictures of new books on Instagram and creating a buzz on there for new books. I think the people who are following that, which is just a few hundred, but they seem to be enjoying what we put out on there, so. That's really our best marketing tool, is a break. We do have them on there to celebrate the anniversary of the building. And as you all know, we do have this centennial committee that's hard to work at. It cannot happen for next May, or throughout the year, but with a celebration. Aside from that, there's not much we've added on to yet. But again, three quarters to go. One down. Anything for goal four? You guys are too easy on us. Goal five, the library will receive the funding necessary to meet the needs of the community. That top one there, provide relevant information regarding libraries' growth and impact on the community. We're doing this constantly, and staff's constantly telling people about the increases in circulation and mentioning that whenever possible. I think just the fact that we had a board of selectmen here for the open house for summer reading is, you know, I think it's very easy to show relevant information when you see it in person. So I think the fact that they were able to see in person success of that, you know, is the best word of mouth we can get, I think. Down a couple of lines, continue to seek out programs and apply to cultural council grants. We'll be applying for a grant this year to help with expenses for the centennial celebration next year. Deadline for that's October 15, so I've started to little outline what's turning to the cultural council. For the next range of 10 month Friends meetings, I try to do that every month. I unfortunately had to miss the last one. I think that was only the second one. I missed it four years, but I had to miss that in September because I was at the open house at the elementary school that night. But I think everything's going well with that. The quarterly requests seem to be working out really well. That was a goal we had for just sort of knowing what it is we would have to spend each quarter on. And I do think it's working out well for us. I hope it's working out well for the Friends I haven't heard of in a while, so I hope they're with that, so.
That's the FY '20 review. When we get together to do the FY '21 action plan, it's all the same goals, nothing, the goals don't have changed. The goals don't change, the objectives don't change. It's just the actions and the timeframe that will change. So if you have anything, you know, to add to that, or thoughts, or ways that you think we could be changing or doing things differently to meet those objectives and goals, then please let me know how we can add anything in, or if there's something you think that we should take out. It'd be good for you to know that, so that when I give you that draft to review, that's in saying it also. That was good.
What's the process for getting something on the sign?
Oh, you just contact the selectmen's office, and they take care of that.
It seems like there's nothing up there.
No, not from the, yeah. So that would be up to the Friends to do that? If the Friends wanted it posted on, for the book sale, then the Friends should definitely, which they have done in the past, reach out to the board of selectmen's office to request.
That's great.
Yes. Or... Well, you're both Friends, so I'm sure you can reach out to John and let him know. And if John needs me to make the call, then I can do that on his behalf, but I can't call and ask to have that advertised if the Friends haven't asked me to. But I am totally willing to make the call if I hear that Friends would like that on the board. And they're very, the space is limited, obviously, as you all know, so there's very lim, you can't put everything on there.
Careful.
Yeah, certainly has something.
I gave her information, and she put what she wanted. Basically, but, okay.
Okay. I didn't hear anything else on the action plan. Director's report.
What did you see about the back?
I shouldn't, no, that's me. I put this in the back.
Just the sort of highlights, I guess. The financial report is done. I didn't receive the information I needed from town hall for that, so I will go over that with Jen after today's meeting, and she will sign it, and I'll get that in the mail. And then it will be in Boston long before the deadline of October 4. So that's great news, and I appreciate town systems with us. Our new custodian began on September 9. Things seem to be going really well with that so far. In terms of conferences that we have talked about, I'll try to get an update for you on that. I did. The early board registration opened last week. It runs through early December, so I really know what to be worried about to an early board registration on day one. And I did speak with Julie Hubert yesterday. The registration on the flight can be purchased on the Towns credit card, so I don't have to worry about getting reimbursed for that. So I do, I'm filling out those forms so that she can sign off on that, and then I can register and make air travel. As far as the hotel goes, I'll put the bit of charging until you get there, so I'll just put that all on my card and then get the reimbursed one so we get back from Nashville in February. In terms of things coming up, we have the Solar System Ambassador coming on Wednesday, October 9. That's from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. It's an open house format, so you can come anytime between 6:00 and 8:00 p.m. The Solar System Ambassador is a local teacher, Joe Hote. And he will be bringing NASA's Apollo moon rocks, which is very exciting, it'll be activities for kids. He is bringing telescopes, but unfortunately, if we haven't had a hard frost in the whole night, we won't be able to go outside and even do anything with telescopes. So we have to play that part by ear. But I think the real jar, the real exciting part for me is the fact that the moon rocks will be here. So that's on Wednesday, October 9, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. We have a couple of Halloween events scheduled. Friday, October 11, at 3 o'clock, we have Cookie Spooky Bingo for ages 5 and up. And we also have a Not So Spooky Rajon story time for ages 3 and up on Tuesday, October 22, at 6:30. And we have a few craft programs scheduled as well for Halloween, and all that information will be up on our website by Friday, so we can check out the calendar page, acupl.org, for a complete listing of Halloween programs. And as we would know, the Friends sale is coming up. The donation drive starts on October 12. All the information on what the Friends would like to receive for donations is up on the library's website on the calendar page. And the annual sale will begin, as well as a membership drive, on Saturday, October 19. And again, all of the information on that, including times, is up on the calendar page. And we also have information here at the library, so you can give us all the info on the Friends sale. We really appreciate everything the Friends do to get the sale going and to make that all happen. All money raised goes directly to the library, so we appreciate this one. Those are my highlights. Unless you have anything?
Just my license. Put chocolate sauce, cookies.
Eat it.
Cookies.
So you haven't tabbed booked, Sandra hasn't booked anybody for a human show like that?
Not coming up immediately.
No.
No. Well, except for if there's something in December, but I can't think of the date of that off the top of my head, so I'm not gonna talk about that. But it will be on the library's website too. Do you have anything else? Can I set the time for the next meeting? Unfortunately, because of just some schedule conflicts for the month of October, we're really looking at one date. We're going to Wednesdays and that would be October 30th. Don't know how that stands for people. I mean, we could do it during the donation drive, but I imagine we're concerned by a lot of books and whatnot in preparation for sale. I don't know if you would do that. October 30? Yes. October 30? If that works.
I think it works.
Okay. Does that work for everyone else? And like I mentioned, if you do have anything to add to the FY21 action plan draft, then please let me know. And I can get that in. How's that ring? What would you like that? I don't know. I would say if you have any thoughts on it, it'd be sometime by the 3rd, at least before the meeting.
Have an email? Yeah, like email would be good. And if you copy everyone, then everyone will be able to see what the key sounds like. Does that sound good?
Sounds good. I'm still not sure. Still not sure. They say this is one of the worst weeks.
Okay, we have no other business. All in favor?
Aye.
This September 25th, 2019, meeting of the Christian Public Library Board of Trustees is officially adjourned. It is 5 o'clock. Thank you.